Ms. Osland, please call the roll.
Ms. Coco?
Here.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Ms. Shaffer?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Welcome. Our vision, Cuyahoga Falls City Schools, the hub of our community, committed to a culture of caring. We innovate, we create, we personalize education for all. This meeting is a meeting of the Cuyahoga Falls Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not a public community meeting, although there are opportunities for public participation. If an individual wishes to address the board regarding a topic found in the meeting agenda, the individual must complete a registration form found inside the attendance notebook and present it to the treasurer. Those registration forms are on the best desk and they can be completed and turned into Ms. Osland. Following the introduction of the topic by the board president, followed by board discussion, the individual will be recognized. If an individual wishes to address the board regarding a topic not found on the meeting agenda, he or she must notify the superintendent and/or board president of the topic no later than three business days in advance of the meeting. These individuals may share their comments during the board business portion of the agenda. In both cases, the individual will preface comments by an announcement of his or her name and address and limit comments to three minutes. All statements should be directed to the board president. No person may address or question board members individually. And now for our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Dr. Selico. So, we are here tonight at Preston. As a board, we thought it was important to have special meetings held at Preston and Price with a presentation, specifically if you haven't been able to be at other board meetings and follow along what has brought us to this point of deciding on the repurposing of either Preston or Price buildings. So, Dr. Selico is going to give us a presentation on the elementary school closure. If you would like to speak after that, we will have the opportunity for anyone who wants to come speak to come up and speak. Please fill out a form in the back and give it to Ms. Osland, and then we will do that following the presentation. Dr. Selico, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and good evening, board. Thank you for this time this evening, and thank you to Principal Brown is somewhere, and thank you for hosting and getting us all set up for this evening. So, you know, just stating the obvious, right? We're here to discuss an elementary school closure, which we have said numerous times, but I can't start a presentation without saying again at how difficult these decisions are and that they are not taken lightly. And we know that these are emotional times, and people are very vested in their community and in their schools, and so we acknowledge that throughout. So, what I'm going to present to you is very factual, but what it doesn't account for is the emotion attached to it. So, please forgive me for not, I just want to say that upfront, but just that I will be presenting very factual information this evening. So, the board has asked me to put together, I have to point that way, there we go, a reason, the reasons what led up to this juncture and why we're discussing a school closure, and then in particular, why we are looking at Price and Preston. And so, just to really start from the beginning of all of this, we wouldn't be closing a school if there weren't a, if there wasn't a very good reason for that, and unfortunately, the reason for it mainly is a financial reason. And back in April, our treasurer, Kristi Stoycoy, who's not able to be here this evening, presented the financial review. We are in what is called fiscal caution, and we had to put together a financial recovery plan, and that is what Ms. Osland, or excuse me, Ms. Stoycoy presented. And in that presentation, this is just the first slide of it. All of these presentations are on our website, so I'm not going to take the time to delve into all of the financial statistics this evening, but you certainly have access to those on our website. But what essentially what she was looking at in the recovery plan were ways in which we were forced, if you will, to save three million dollars, four million dollars in three years. So, that's a lot of money to have to cut from a budget. So, the question becomes, how are we going to get there? So, certainly, we can look at smaller items and reduce a little bit here, a little bit there, but it doesn't get you four million dollars in a short amount of time. So, unfortunately, your impact that oftentimes staff is impacted because it's such a large portion of our budget. So, when we were looking at ways in which we could make some reductions, which you'll see in this report, should you choose to look at it, we're looking at like our first, starting with our enrollment. We have seen a 25% reduction in our attendance, our enrollment over 10 years. So, we've lost just about 1,000 children, and that's a lot. But what we haven't done in Ms. Stoycoy's presentation, you'll see, is that we haven't accounted for that in our staffing. So, even though we had 5,000 children at one time, so I don't recall the number off the top of my head, but whatever that staff number was, fast forward and see that we have 4,000 children now and almost the same amount of staff. So, we really need to adjust that. So, that is one of the things that she examined. She also looked at different ways in which we could save money. And some of those reasons that we noted include a school closure, again, which is why we're here this evening, staff reductions, and that's, a lot of that is done through attrition. So, as people leave us, we aren't replacing positions. We did, we've done a lot of that over the last three years. So, again, trying to right-size our staffing. And then, we're also looking at selling buildings. That's another way in which we can generate revenue. We know that once we open our new campus, we will be selling the high school, we'll be selling Roberts, and you'll hear a little bit more about another possible building that may be sold as well. And so, there's, those are some ways to generate revenue. We also will be cutting budgets by 10%, but again, it's not going to get you anywhere near the millions of dollars that you need to save in doing that, but it is showing that we are trying to look at every avenue in which we can, we can save money. So, that's just a brief overview of what's in that report.
I just want to add, not everything we were even doing to save money would the state let us count towards that four million dollars, and that's important to note too, because we know, the community knows as well, that the high school and Roberts are closing because we have our new 612 building, and so we'll be selling those buildings. But the state would not allow us to use that, those, selling of those buildings towards that four million dollars. So, we had to then add additional into that four million dollars to not account for that.
That's right. The proceeds can't, can't count from the sale of the building. They would not allow us to do that, so we had to come up with other ways in which we could do that. So, here's just again what I just stated, the enrollment trends that you can see over time. This is, and I forgot my glasses, but this is the past. So, I'm show you here in a few, the future slide I believe I have next, but you can see that we are declining overall in enrollment. And again, these are on the website as well, so feel free to delve into them a little bit more, as I mentioned. Again, here's the enrollment that we are predicting. Now, that does say 25 to 35, am I right? Is that what it says, FY? Okay, thank you. So, it's really bad, the older I get, it's horrible. But nonetheless, this is the next 10 years. You also will see that there's a decline projected here of approximately 350 students. So, you can see, over the next 10 years, we also are projected to lose more students. So, when we're looking at factors to consider, so now heading into a little bit of, you know, some of the reasons, some of the factors that we would consider as a board, reasons why we would close a school, what factors would come into play to determine which school would be closed. There are a number of things listed there. This is an excerpt from our board policy that actually states things in which you would look at reasons, and I'll show you some of them as we go throughout. Most of them apply, but not always all of them, you know, future sites, the conditions of buildings, how much money it would cost to put into the buildings, transportation, all those types of things. So, historical value, et cetera. But those are just a list of them according to policy. So, one of the things we did was we looked at our, our schools one by one and wanted to see what, just kind of mapped out the years in which they were built, you know, how old are they? We looked at in some slides you'll see here, capacity, how many students they, they are able to hold, the square footage, et cetera. So, we were able to look at all of those factors when we're taking things into consideration. There's a link there, I'm not going to go through every link, but again, it is on the website. But essentially, it just is a little bit more detailed information about the different information that's on that slide there. It just goes a little bit deeper. But again, this is the information presented, that I've presented over time to the board. And some of you may have seen slides that I presented these earlier. So, we look at things such as environmental and site sustainability factors. So, questions we're looking at as we are going around looking at the schools, are the schools large enough? Are they too large? How many students will they hold? Is, are, if we add more students to these certain buildings, do they have the capabilities to provide the schedules that students need as it relates to, let's say, art, music, our specials, our capacity in our gymnasiums in our, because many schools, our gyms will double as a cafeteria in some schools, but is there room in the cafeterias for students, et cetera? So, we're just kind of looking at all of those things. Really, environmental isn't a major factor in all of this. We're, we don't have any environmental concerns really that I'm aware of that we have to consider when looking at buildings. But what you'll see there, the six schools that are listed, you, those are links, again, to a study that was done by the Ohio Schools Facilities Commission, and those are the folks that are giving us money towards building our current campus, right? The state gives us money, and so they come in and do studies regarding each one of the schools, and they look at everything. You'll see there, there's pictures of the schools in, in inside as well as exterior, and they will show you the age of the roofs and the money that you have to put in for HVAC, et cetera. And then, at the end of the day, they determine what schools have, what the ratio is to renovate versus rebuild, and which is how we ended up building a new high school. The same process would apply for elementary schools. So, if it's going to cost more than two-thirds of the value to build new, and then they will not, the state will not give us money if it's more than 66% to renovate, and then that's how you end up building new buildings. Because our buildings are so old, all of them qualify to be rebuilt. But those are the stat, they're literally 70 pages, 80 pages long, so that's why I'm not clicking on them, but they're all there should anyone be interested. So, we looked at the locations in the community. So, where are our current schools located? I'll just let you take a peek just for a moment here. They're all divided up by, by the different colors you see there. And then, when you see the print, those are schools. And I, is Sine on there? Do we have Sine on there?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. All right. There we go. All right, again, I mentioned earlier, the building capacity. So, what we are looking at here, though we have, so what you'll find the Ohio Facilities Commission will do is they'll tell you that you can have X amount of students in a school. Well, those numbers are also rather old, but they're pretty accurate. I did look at them, I don't necessarily, I had some question about Silver Lake's capacity, but it's only because over time, certainly, we have needed more room in our schools because we have students with disabilities that require sometimes their own space, which with that comes some sensory rooms that, that are sometimes necessary. We also have tutoring that goes on, so small group instruction classroom space is needed, our occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech services, psychological and counseling services. So, all of those things require space that back then, and I'm aging myself, but you know, we didn't necessarily need all that space because all those services weren't provided, but now they are. And so, it's not as easy of an equation to say if you have 400 students and you want to divide that by 25 students in a classroom, and you arrive at a number, and that's how many classrooms you need. That's not how this really works. But so, what we did, we had to look at, we literally walked every school a couple of times. We looked at floor plans, and we arrived at how many different classrooms were available in each one of the buildings. Because we can't relocate, we can say, maybe on paper, it looks like, oh, we should send 100 students to Richardson. Well, if they only have room for 50, we can't do that. So, we had to look at how many classrooms were available, and that's what you see there. And then, there's also a link to a capacity study that digs a little bit deeper as well. But again, I'm not going to, to get into that this evening, but that's the gist of what we were looking at there. So, transportation factors, this is a little bit of a, a little bit of a confusing slide, but what we're looking for here, we just, we need to be mindful of transportation. When you, when you close a school, you are relocating students elsewhere, and with that comes transportation. So, we need to gauge how much we're going to be spending in transportation. Are, do we have the number of drivers we need? Do we have the number, enough buses in our fleet, for example? So, those are all things that we have to take into consideration, the number of routes, all of that. And so, we did a little bit of a study here relative to where buses go as well as vans, because we recently purchased vans to save money, which have been really a lifesaver and quite a, a good move in terms of savings when you're only transporting one or two students, even four, as opposed to taking a big bus, you're just using the vans. So, we also looked at some of the, the routes there. All right. Okay, there we go. Cost savings, so again, this was a pretty extensive sheet as well, and again, it's linked for you. This data's a little bit older now, up to this point, it's probably a few months old maybe at this point. But these were the things that the treasurer looked at, and certainly, there are, we, what we did not do is go down to every little minute detail and every single expenditure. We go for the big pockets that cost us money, so equipment, technology, the different things that you see listed there. And she looked at how much the cost would be in each of the buildings and what we could save should we close a building, what that savings would amount to. And again, that's located in that, that link. So, alternative uses of buildings. And by the way, I have no idea what these slides say. Thankfully, I've done this one before, I can't see anything other than a few. I can see the first line, so that's good. I'm sort of guessing, it's terrible. My glasses are in the car, I just remembered, I probably could have gotten them. You know what, yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
I can see.
Mr. Harris saves the day. I know, well, that's because you're a lot younger, Mr. Harris. All right, so, the alternative uses of buildings. So, one of the things we look at certainly is, what are we going to do with buildings if we were to close a building? What are we going to do with it? Are we going to sell it? Is it going to be the future site of a new elementary school? Certainly, we know that that is something in the future we would like to see. Our buildings, as we sit in them, are aging and are in need of replacement, frankly. But I know that we, that's another phase that we will be discussing. But we have to look at, you know, we don't want to necessarily get rid of a school site that we think would be a viable one, right? So, we're looking at those. We're looking at, we need to keep in mind a future board office perhaps folded into our next phase. Currently, we are right up the street, which is actually rather nice, and we love our space. But in the future, are we going to fold that into the district and perhaps join a building at some point or not? And then, the last thing I want to point out and just spend a moment on, and pointing out also to you that what you see there are the schools and their acreage. And the reason the acreage is there is because we are looking at future sites. Some of our schools automatically are eliminated for a future site based on the acreage. They're just, there's not enough, frankly. So, some of them were automatically eliminated as a future site. But one of the things that I've asked the board to consider through this process was, we've been examining our six elementary schools, but what we've sort of overlooked for a little bit of time here was that we have a seventh, really, and that's Sine. And so, I was there, you know, I visited a few times a year. It's not, currently, it's, it is our building, it's always been, but we've rented it out to the preschool program as well as an alternative program there. And so, it's not necessarily our, there are, some of them are students, but it's not under the auspices of Cuyahoga Falls City Schools. So, I was there visiting and talking with some folks and just, just thinking to myself, well, we're, we're sort of forgetting about this building. And it's not in great shape. Part of it is our preschool's really well cared for, and we just did an amazing job preparing for it, but there's a whole other half plus to that building that is in need of repair. And so, I thought to myself, well, maybe we should be looking, folding this into the equation as well. And so, what we've been doing is talking a lot about closing an elementary school, but I'm going to challenge us to look at repurposing a school. And while that sounds great, and it might sound like semantics, because at the end of the day, technically, you will be closing a school as it exists, meaning, I'm going to use Preston since we're here as an example, should this school close, rather than close it, we would repurpose it and take the students that are at Sine and relocate them here. So, you would have preschool here, and you would have our alternative learning center there, a separate program that again rents from us. It's not our program, but a lot of our students attend it, and we would divide the school so it's separate. And that's how Sine currently exists, that preschool's on one side, and the other school, they have separate entrances, et cetera, are very separate. But that is what I've asked the board to consider, and then we would sell Sine. So, early in my presentation, I said we might have another building to discuss, that is a possible sale, and that would be Sine. And so, therefore, you would now generate some revenue in selling Sine. So, that is a little bit, oops, excuse me, how we arrived at Price and Preston. And the reason being is, there we go. The reason being is, so DeWitt, Richardson, and Lincoln have historically been higher, higher enrollment, number one, and two, the buildings are rather large. So, if we were going to close one of them, we would have to relocate a lot of students, and I don't know that we would have the capacity, as I referred to earlier, about putting all of those students into other schools. So, then, we had to focus on smaller schools. And then, we also looked at, if we wanted to close Sine and repurpose a school for our youngest learners, who many of them have disabilities, our preschool students, we needed to have a handicap accessible ADA, if you will, facility as well as preferably a single-story building. So, hence, how we then, if you were to go along that, following that logic, that's how we landed at Price and Preston, which are both ADA, pretty accessible, single-story, and that's how we arrived here. So, as we went further in our discussion, that's, that was like kind of phase one of our discussion with the board, and then phase two sort of became this redrawing of the boundary lines and what that would look like. And so, as we know, as I mentioned earlier, transportation is a big, plays a big role in this. And so, considerations are really what I mentioned earlier, so I won't, I won't go over all of this again, but some of them are new that I didn't mention, which is, for instance, how long will students be on a bus? We don't want them on a bus if we can hold, I think I heard our transportation supervisor say 45 minutes. Certainly doesn't want them on an hour, in some instances, rare instances, some of those things may happen, but she works very hard to avoid that. So, how long is a student on a bus? Again, where's their closest, where's the school closest to their address? Those certainly help with efficiency in your bus routes. And again, back to drivers, some of the things that I had stated. And again, looking at, one thing I didn't say were the main roads versus side roads. So, sometimes, when you're looking at these lines, you think, oh, you could just draw it right here or right here, but not keep, not necessarily taking into account a main road, railroad tracks, things that it might be unsafe for students. So, things that we, like, might look really easy for us on the surface to just say, just draw these lines. It is very involved, and Ms. Johnson, who's our transportation supervisor, came and presented to the board and showed how you kind of manipulate those lines and how things are populated. So, it's a little tricky. And then, of course, we look at the number of students impacted, which is also another really big consideration for the board, how many students will be impacted. So, we looked at two different scenarios, one's Preston and one's Price. One thing I'm going to caution you on, I said this the last time I presented this, is this is not written in stone. This is just one way in which you could draw the lines. I'm sure there are many, but again, taking into consideration what I mentioned earlier, safety of students. So, this is just one way, the one on the left is the current boundaries, and then, if Preston closes, what it looks like with the new boundaries drawn, and then, the numbers you see there are the current enrollment versus what the new enrollments would be in each one of the buildings. And what we discovered is each one of those buildings have the capacity to take on the students that you see there. Every building can, can fit that amount of students.
So, when you look at the Preston example, you'll see that the school that gets impacted the most, other than Preston, obviously, that closes, is Price's boundaries get impacted the most. And then, when we go on the Price closing slide, other than Price that obviously closes in that one, the school that gets impacted the most is DeWitt. So, just kind of the high level of that. And we call this draft one because these are very rough drafts. But those two theories will still kind of win the day no matter how we do this. If Preston closes, Price's boundaries will get impacted the most. And if Price closes, DeWitt's boundaries will get impacted the most. So, that's kind of the high-level truths that are unavoidable, just as we're thinking about this as well.
And there's the, the Price example then, as Mr. Gomez was, what he was referring to there. So, Richardson becomes, you could see, a lot bigger. And DeWitt actually becomes smaller. Their, their enrollment both ways actually lessens in both. smaller. Their enrollment both ways actually lessens in both examples. Okay? And again, these are not written in stone by any means, I just want to keep saying that, because I know, I'm tempted, even as a parent myself, I might be looking and saying, oh, well, I live on Chestnut, let me see where that falls on this map and try to figure out where it is, please don't do that, because it really, at the end of the day, most likely won't be necessarily accurate. So, I just don't want to give false pretenses to trying to figure that out. So, that's the disclaimer there. So, those were the two models in which the board looked at. And then, the other really big factor that has been really talked about, and the concern by the board is the number of displaced students through this process, and you see TBD, which might not be really helpful for the purposes of this evening, but if you were to look at the other maps that I showed you, you can do some of that figuring, and we have looked at numbers in previous meetings and said, okay, well, this many students if it's Price, this many if it's Preston, because you would take into consideration that if it's Preston that closes, again, because we're here this evening, all of those students, the 230-ish students that are here, all of them would be displaced on top of then, other students that the bumping effect happens. So, we looked at that for Preston, we looked at that for Price, didn't really present those to you this evening, because again, these are drafts, but that is one of the considerations that the board is taking into, they are taking into consideration, and then again, striving to not, try not to displace, you know, displace the fewest amount of students as possible. And then, just finally, some considerations, kind of like in summation, so, overall, when looking at closing a school, the big pockets or nuggets, if you will, are, you know, really, again, the redistricting, so the number of students impacted. So, some of you are here this evening, I don't want to make the assumption you're all Preston parents, you might be from other schools, knowing that if you attend DeWitt, or Richardson, or one of the other schools, you might very well be impacted as well. We just don't know that answer yet, but we know that it's not just Preston or Price students that will be impacted, it's a lot of students, and we're not, we're not trying to hide that, we're being very transparent and open about that, that we'll do the best we can, but know that many people will be impacted. And then, the demographic profile, so always to take into consideration just how we, looking at the profiles, meaning socioeconomics, racially, culturally, you know, diversity in the composition makeup of every school, and then the transportation, as I talked about this evening, again, what are the implications and costs associated with transportation, and not only the costs, but we know there's been a shortage of drivers everywhere, right? Places are, school districts are cutting out high school busing, they're cutting out routes, and really struggling, and we have been very fortunate, and I'm very proud of the fact that our team has worked very hard to secure drivers, not only through compensation, but through the way in which we value them and treat them, I think that's extremely important. So, those things, travel time, as I mentioned, are all very important relative to transportation, and then finally, students and staff, kind of a lot of things that come under there, but class sizes and staff reductions. So, we're also sensitive to that, knowing that when you close a school, it's not just teachers that are impacted, it's your custodial, your principals, your secretaries, so we know that that too, very sensitive to those situations, and then, trying to, and we will continue to maintain good class sizes, but I will say that we have some, especially in the last couple of years, some classes, when you walk into, for a teacher, it's wonderful, and I would appreciate as a teacher as well, you know, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen students, but I will tell you, in a lot of surrounding districts, that's really a luxury, that's not, that's not really the average and norm that you will see in a lot of districts. So, while we don't want to go much higher than that, we still set limits for ourselves. So, when we did the work, when we did a lot of this configuring and providing you with stats, we used very reasonable numbers. So, we stayed at twenty-two for kindergarten and first grade, we looked at twenty-four for second, third, maybe, and then fourth and fifth, twenty-five. So, those are still very reasonable numbers, and so, we're really striving to stay within those. So, I want to be clear about that. So, we're not going to have classrooms of thirty, and I know parents sometimes panic about that, we'll see things on social media, that a class has sixty children, that's a true story, I saw that, and I can tell you and assure you that there will never be sixty students in one class in an elementary school. Band might be different, or, you know, at the high school level, but certainly not sixty in an elementary school. So, with that, board, that concludes my presentation. I will be giving the same exact presentation, so if you're more than welcome to come again, if you would like, on September third, to Price, but it will be the same presentation. And, board, may I entertain any questions from you, or thoughts?
Thank you, Dr. Seliko.
Thank you.
I just wanted to state, all of this is on our website, I just wanted to let you know that it's under the Treasurer tab on the website is where the presentation is. I know sometimes to navigate through and try to find where things are, so I want to make sure everyone knows that that is where you would click, is on Treasurer, and that's where you'll find the presentation with everything that was presented this evening. Also, one of the questions as we get as a board is when, when is this going to be decided? And as a board, we have made a commitment to have a decision made by, in November, and that doesn't mean that we might not have it, or we might have a decision sooner than that, but we will not have this on our agenda again for discussion until after we have our meetings, both here and at Price as well, because we want the opportunity to listen and hear from our community members, which we'll be giving the opportunity for everyone here this evening. Also, we know that not everyone is comfortable getting up and speaking in a public setting, and you may have questions that haven't been answered in the presentation as well, and I would invite anyone to email us, if you click on the Board tab, you will find all of our direct emails, and I'm confident in speaking for the whole board on this, that there's, we will return your email. Some of us have day jobs, so it may not be immediately when it's sent, but we will return those emails to you as well, so I wanted to make sure that I let everyone know that. At this time, we're going to take a five-minute recess, so if anyone has filled out a form and would like to speak to the board, or, I'm sorry, did anybody else want to add?
I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to come out tonight, I just appreciate that. I also wanted to say, I think the presentation makes a strong case that we're in a very unfortunate decision, where this is a reality, but I also know that none of the facts make you feel better about the situation that your kid's school is being talked about as possibly closing. So, I recognize that we're in an unfortunate situation where the facts have put us in this place, and we've done a lot of things with our budget and our finances. We've stretched a levy for six years, going on seven years, since we've put a new levy on the ballot, we've worked to be very fiscally responsible, but none of those facts overshadow the fact that your kid's school is being talked about being closed, and that's not something that makes people feel good. And so, none of that changes that fact. And all of us on the board have emotions connected to both Preston and Price, and I won't go through other people's, but I went to Preston myself, I've been staring at this mural all night, which was painted when I was a student here, so, I have a lot of emotions connected to this place, as well as Price, and everyone here on the board has their own stories of why Preston and Price matter, and they have emotions connected with them as well. So, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
And I would just add too, and I appreciate that, and I wanted to say thank you as well, and just assure everyone in the room that no matter where your child attends, I can assure you, Superintendent, that your child will get the best education possible, so please know that. We are focused very, we're very serious about bringing equity and bringing the same practices and consistency to everyone of our schools. So, what children are getting in Richardson, they're getting at DeWitt, they're getting at Price, et cetera. So, please know that we will do everything we can to provide the most excellent education for your children. Thank you, sorry.
Thank you very much, Dr. Seliko. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and so, anyone that has filled out a form, or if you have not had a chance and would like to speak, there are forms back on the table. If you could bring those up to Mrs. Osland during the recess, and then we will be opening up for the community to speak at that time. Recession is at six thirty-six, we will reconvene at six forty-one. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. It is six forty-one PM, and we are back in session. If there is anyone else that would like to turn in a form to speak, if you could please bring it up to Mrs. Osland now, and then we will start calling people forward. Thank you. As a reminder, when you come forward to speak, you have three minutes to speak, we'll ask you to state your name and your address when you come up, and according to our board policy, BDDH, nothing is directed towards any specific employees in the statements as well. So, first up is Ms. Mackey, if you would like to come up.
Hi. I started my first grade here in this building when it was brand-new, so I have attachment to it, but I've been a teacher for over thirty years.
Can you say your name?
Oh, sorry, Terry Mackey, ten twenty Cooper Drive, down the road. I'm in my mom's house right now. But anyhow, so, do I have some attachment to this building? Yes, but I also completely understand as a teacher, that we have to make sure we're meeting the needs of the kids as we do this. Am I wrong in reading the statistics? From what I saw, it looks like the rooms here are bigger than the rooms in Price, the classrooms. When I looked at the data from there, it looked like these are larger rooms. Well, I guess I'm going to say, if they are, that's one thing I would take into consideration, especially since the class sizes are increasing. The other, for me, I guess, could be a consideration, I think that probably dismissal and morning starts are maybe easier with all the cars and stuff at Price than they are here. But, when I weigh that stuff out, I still come back to that the classroom size would be an important issue, and this building is in great shape, it's cheerful. I'm not saying Price isn't. I just looked at class size. So, that's it. I'm sure the board, or not class size, classroom size, I know, I have great confidence that the board will make the best decision possible. I have faith in that.
Thank you very much. Next up is Rachel Loza, please. Thank you. Please state your name.
Yes, I'm Rachel Loza. I live at seven six eight Talmadge Road, which is a little bit closer than Cooper, because it's right next door. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rachel Loza. I'm here tonight as the mother of Preston Elementary students, as a neighbor, and as the Ward One council person. I want to thank you for the work you are doing to guide our schools through this difficult situation and decision. I have no doubts that the education our children receive in this district, whether here at Preston or elsewhere, would be excellent, and that our students would continue to be well cared for, but I would be remiss if I didn't stand here tonight and fight to keep our Ward One school open. Preston is more than just a building, it is a community, it is a home to diverse student body, including many children who receive special education services. These students thrive in an environment where teachers and staff know them personally, where they are seen, supported, and cared for as individuals. That kind of community connection is not easily replicated when students are moved or dispersed. Sorry, I'm very blind. When you weigh in this decision, I ask you to look beyond the numbers on paper. Consider the socioeconomic and cultural diversity that Preston represents. Consider the families whose voices may not always be the loudest, but whose needs are very real. I respectfully urge you to keep Preston Elementary open for the good of our children, families, and our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank everyone again for coming out this evening, for the presentation, and reiterate again that any questions that you have, or if you didn't feel comfortable speaking, please reach out to us. And as Mr. Gomez stated, we all are members in this community, and we either currently have students enrolled in this district, previously have, previously taught in the district, or have up-and-coming students. So, our hearts are in this district, and we're here serving on the board because of that, and we that, and we understand the impact that this is going to have on, and what a weighted decision it is. So, thank you for coming out after this board meeting. As a board, we're actually going to be touring this building, and we'll be doing the same at Price as well, as part of our decision-making that we know we have coming up in the future. And that brings us to motion to adjourn. It is recommended that the Board of Education adjourns this meeting.
Say.
Ms. Osland, please call the roll.
Mr. Gomez?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Aye.
Ms. Poco?
Aye. Meeting adjourned at six-forty-seven PM.